Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Meeting, April the first, two thousand nineteen, approximately seven eleven. Mr. Derrick, you call the rule, please.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ralph Meeker?
Here.
Rod Powell is at some, Dan is in one of the at some, Dan is at some, I'm sorry. We have a forum with the.
Thank you.
With the inclusion of that.
I'd like to make a quick announcement tonight before we get started with our prayer and pledge. Tina Skaggs has cooked desserts for everyone here tonight. We'll have free ice cream to go with that. And so please stick around and she'll be coming in as we're meeting to disperse that. Feel free to get up and mingle around. And all of that is nothing but a fool joke. Sorry. For those of you that know Tina, that was really hurtful. She cooks, does some good desserts. Anyway, if you would please stand. Tonight Pastor McLean will lead us in prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance by you.
Thank you, America. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for the time together tonight. Father, we thank you for this city. We do pray that your continued favor and grace will be on our lives and on our town. Father, we pray tonight for all those in public service. We pray for their wisdom. We pray for their safety. For all those that serve and love our town. Father, we pray for our families, that you would protect them. Father, we're grateful to live in a place like Greenwood. We're thankful for all those in this room and those that are not here as well that serve and provide that for us. We're thankful for Jesus. It's all these things we pray in his name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Maggie Sue. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Pastor. At this time, I would ask the councils to look over, if you've not had a chance already, to do the minutes where I'm marking for the council meeting. And entertain the motion to accept those. The motion is second? Yes, yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, yes. Yes, sorry. I get to know, sorry. Thank you. Uh, recognition and acknowledgements again. As I said earlier, she will be coming in. It's not going to work the second time, I guess. Uh, we don't have anything official tonight, uh, but I would like to recognize everyone here and thank you for being here. So thank you for coming and hopefully we'll get through this. Oh, that was the other thing I was going to say. We're guaranteed a forty-five minute meeting time, no more. Also, April fourth. I'm trying, I'm trying to make that the last thing I do with regard to that, but not likely. Uh, committee reports, uh, we have, Mr. Kenny Sunday is not here tonight. He could not make it. Uh, he's, he was here and handed off his report too, so you have a written report. Pretty busy out there with baseball, soccer and something softball, I guess, going on, so. If you have any questions regarding that report, can you let us know? Tammy or I will get answers for you. SRCA has a written report in there. Parks Commission also has a written report and I know Mr. Goldstein's here. If you have any questions for him. Mr. Goldstein, if you'd like to come up. You're the chairman.
City Council, Mayor Higbee, Mr. Derrick. Just want to bring your attention to the Parks Commission. They have a special meeting called Monday the twenty-fifth. Some of the things covered was the acceptance of the Parks Director's resignation. Motion to accept. Kimmy Riley as interim Parks Director. Notification with newspapers, websites, bulletin boards, et cetera, forth. Receiving resumes for that position. Thursday, the twenty-eighth, there was a special call meeting. Inadvisable, dear Mr. Stein, to the interim Parks Director for thirty days. Secondly, there was an appointment of Richard McKinnon as consultant for the Department of Department on an interim basis for that period and a maximum of sixty hours for a month. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. When will you have those, uh, for, for applications?
Yeah, maybe we'll get May first. Receive resumes, the council, the commission will review. Do interviews for that position. Hopefully they have a decision by May first.
So, I guess, uh, you're saying you're going to have a decision by May first. So did I hear you saying that you're going to accept resolutions sub, I mean, the applications up to May first, or you're going to?
No, no, no. Probably within two weeks, we'll have the applications. Do the review, interviews, hopefully done by May first.
Thank you, sir. Water, Waste Water Commission, Mr. Bailey?
No reports, so we didn't have a whole lot to report on. Uh, we did submit a offer to Jamesport a few weeks back. Purchase, uh, they got three hundred forty to a sixty acres on intersection Highway ten and seventy-one and then down. So acreage on both sides of seventy-one down the Mount Zion Road in Denver hits. And, uh, they don't have meetings every month. They're, they're getting their board together. And when they do, we'll go meet with them. I was talking to someone who's had more deals with them than I have. I told him I thought we had one third chance that second. He thought, he said I was optimistic, so we'll see. That's all. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Appreciate that. This time we are at our assistant forum. I did not receive that clipboard. No one, no one had signed up. I say I want to do this never this way again, but I'm going to do it one more time this week in Snow Lake. If you didn't get to sign up to the assistant forum, you may come forward and you have, you could have five minutes to speak to the council about anything you'd like to. If you choose to do that. Good. At this time, I would ask if there are any agenda additions I'm having to report, not April fourth. But the department has had none, so we are not adding any unless the council has anything.
I have four or five items like that.
Didn't you? April, April, oh, thank you, somebody. We need a little sign just to hold up. Uh, at this time, before we go into old business, I would ask the council to consider and, and ask for a motion to go into executive session to discuss. Personnel matters, thank you. That was a good one. Has to be.
Department, discipline.
Personnel. Disciplinary action, personnel. Personnel, okay. In what force department, sorry? That was painful. I made that motion. The motion is second? So if you will excuse us.
Mr. Brown?
Oh, sorry. Yes, yes.
Mayor Higbee?
Yes. At this time, I would entertain a motion to come back into session.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second. The motion is second?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Meeker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
And Terry?
Yes.
It's unanimous, nice to read. Also, I'd like to show that Rod Powell and Dan Terry have arrived.
Thank you. And announce that there has been no actions to be taken. So obviously, the forty-five minute meeting was a, a fool's. Nobody seems happy out there. Sorry. We will continue on with our meeting. Uh, number one on the City Attorney Board, Mr. President, handling the court material, sir, reading.
And, uh, with each divorce, then comes and, uh, I'm saying, uh, that was me and I think we got a couple of all grow and, uh, all the corrections have been made and I'm asking you guys to put on my briefing. And not the workers.
Well, I guess the board, uh, that is large discussion. I know that a couple of were, were, uh, revenue of permit. One was a blasting permit and one was a, a special hauling permit. Do you know what those look like or what, what those insist of?
I will have to assist in putting those together. It's going to be similar to what the building permit basically looks like.
You talked about the ones that were talked about in the section eight, A, hauling permit?
Yes, and then the one in section five, C. I think, or if I can get it right, yeah, five C says a blasting permit. And I guess the other thing, I don't know if you can, because we have to complicate it, but on that section five C, it says section five B above. I don't know if that's incorrect, to capital D in the new one. And then, uh, in section eight, E, when it says, you know, kind of refer to that violation of the special permit. It says subject to a penalty of a thousand percent of the usual fee. And I'm seeing that the fee is fifty dollars, you know, a hundred percent, I assume would be another fifty dollars, so a thousand would be five hundred possibly on top of that? That's a thousand?
Yes.
I'm just wondering if that, does that seem substantial enough? Just a five hundred dollar fee or?
You've got to limit yourself on how big of a charge that you have ever you can give in, uh, hot water. So pushing the elbow up here. And doing this, as you recall, I have some reluctance and recommend me doing this, but, uh, Dan and I sit down and visit and talk, and I think it should be pretty good compromise that we came up with and if he's okay with it, I'm certainly okay with it.
On the hauling, if I can throw that out, that involves the street department. So Dennis is going to be involved in that anyway in terms of how that, how that all goes. It's unlikely that there'd be violations on the hauling part. The blasting permit, there's a blasting permit on the books now, but it has to be amended. But there's already one pager that, you know, that, uh, that you have to work from. It'll just have to be updated.
Yes, in some ways I always would like to see them kind of attached to the ordinance that we're discussing, you know, just to so that we, you know, we know what is, what this all pertains to. And then I guess the, uh, in section five B, that notification of initial blasting must be within thirty, given thirty days in advance. Is that the same as the state or is that more restrictive, less restrictive?
I think we try to make everything the same as the state, so we hope to get. I don't think you can make it more restrictive than we.
Oh, if you're making more restrictive, you can't make it less restrictive.
I think that's correct. And I don't recall, do you recall that?
I think that's federal, Mike, I believe.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think, I think we call that, means that it's federal.
And then the last one, six A, and just to say we're in line with the federal. Uh, you know, says blasting should be prohibited within one thousand feet of property on structure. Again, has that been really proposed with federal, they won't?
Yes. I know that I have spent a lot of time with this and I know Dan has spent even more than what I have spent going through this and providing the federal regulations and reviewing this. I've talked to the municipal league on multiple occasions, as well as various other agencies that they work and saw that regulate this and putting this together. So this isn't something that is just thrown together. This is something that we put a whole lot of time in.
It's the name, not my name.
Not my name.
Well, and AC, just so you will hope for peace of mind, section one of his sites, the state and federal areas were all as different.
Right, and I'm, I'm just noticing that. That's why I was wondering if they were, if our things were more restrictive, you know, when you say a thousand feet or?
I think that everything is pretty much in line with what the federal requires and they're going to have to do a federal permit when that's coming here anyway, so. The main, the main thing we get from this is notification.
Well, and I guess with that, it'll hedge out anything I see that we're kind of in control of is just the, the special hauling permit and the blasting permit.
Correct.
And I guess I would like to see kind of some, what those permits look like.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I haven't seen this ordinance since it seemed like, uh, my department will be the ones that, uh, want to write the permit and speed to do the inspection. And so I'm a little confused on, uh, the, uh, fee for, uh, not necessarily the fee, but the notification of thirty days for, uh, blasting. How is that, is that per incident or is that per project? You know, if, if we have a subdivision being laid out and they need to do some blasting for, uh, a water line, for example, do they have to give a thirty day notice for that? And then if they have another, do we give another thirty day notice?
Yes.
If they were blasting for the water line, it was said, you know, you notice, if you put a notification, this water line will be blasted on this day and an additional water line will be blasted on this day, I think that'll be in one of the action. All right, another thing, just to take the planning. Within a thousand feet of a, uh, private structure, some of these things are done between homes. I'd like to know, know about it if it's done between my own. Do I? I would like to know about it if it's done. Yeah, I understand that, but, but what I'm saying is if you put a thousand foot restriction on there, how are you going to build this project if you've got existing homes there and you're extending your project yet? For example, in Maple, Maple Ridge, blasting was used up there quite a bit. Uh, nobody knew anything about it. I mean, it was so, because that's the kind of blasting that they do. I mean, it's how blasting, well, it's not blasting, it's, it's cracking the rock, it's cracking. And, uh, so like I said, some of those were done between homes and it, and it didn't affect the, the homes on both sides of it. But if you put a thousand foot range on that, uh, you know, God, I, uh, the mayor and I, you know, we're faced every day with people that say Greenwood is the hardest place in the world to build. We can't build in Greenwood. Restrictions are too high and frequent and yet we keep, think our restrictions are higher than Chatting Cross? No, I don't either.
These are federal regulations, so if they're blasting between houses, they're violating federal law.
But is there a difference between blasting and fracking at that point? Uh, uh, you know, when you go out here on, on, uh, when they're building the tunnel on I forty-nine and they're blowing that tunnel, that's blasting. When they're fracking in for, uh, water and gas and sewer lines, that's a different thing, but I think we're, we're confusing the two together. And, uh, again, these are controlled, controlled by people that know what they're doing. I've seen plastic explosive used next to a glass structure and it didn't make, it didn't hurt the glass structure. It blew one direction. I mean, that, that's the control that they have all day. I, I've seen them drop buildings into its own foundation. And yet, you know, we're saying that if, if, and we live in a rocky area. Like I said, if we're looking at, at, you know, this is all due to the, the area of Ed Jones, uh, but, uh, you look up at Forest Hills, it was used in Forest Hills.
I guess what I'm, uh, you know, suspecting of is, uh, there was a certain quarry operator kind of here in town that, that blasted. And you heard that last, a lot of.
Oh, yeah.
Were shoveling it, but.
Oh, yeah. He, he used to blow from one end to the other, but that's, that's, that's a guy that didn't know what he was doing.
Right.
And I think what you're describing are very highly skilled. Yet, so how do we know we're getting those highly skilled guys? And if we're not getting one of those highly skilled guys and it's between mine and my neighbor's house, I'd kind of like to know that. This is like, yeah. Certainly, I have no, I have no.
So it's not, it's not, it's not to let him know that, that you're arguing, it's the, it's the restriction on the, the distance, right?
Yeah.
So does there, is there any way that there can be a, I guess, areas upon?
What, the top of blasting or, or fracking or?
That I don't know. Like I said, I haven't seen the ordinance. I know nothing about it. Uh, this has been going on, you know, for months and months and, and nothing was ever said near my department about it and it didn't seem like we're the ones that's going to. Well, we've had this on for three months. I don't think you have to be invited to look at it.
I think it's been a while to hear.
Yeah, I couldn't invite Brandon, but I put it in there, right? But you could have looked at it. I mean, and, I mean, anybody in the public could have looked at it. I could have. But I, I, I mean, I would think that planning would have said, hey, I want to take a look at that and see what's going on.
But I, I guess I kind of, you know, because sometimes there are exceptions to every rule. But I guess sometimes I kind of worries me there when you say section A says, you know, shall be prohibited because I almost know that, you know.
Shall.
Know what shall means. Yeah. And stuff, and it, you know, I think, again, a town like Greenwood, I mean, I grew up in there here too, it's very similar. You know, and you go just only a little bit deep and you're hitting, you know, solid rock, you know, to that. Uh, well, I know that there one time that, uh, we're at Bell Park, we were trying to get a, a water line up there or whatever and there was this piece of high dollar equipment that was in town, but then it let it leave, you know, and said, well, we can't, you know, do it without this, you know, high dollar.
We were fortunate at Bell Park that we were able to use the, the drill up there instead of, uh, cracking or exploding. And, uh, and that can be used in a lot of cases, but, uh, again, you know, it just, this seems to me like, uh, we're, we're getting all the restricted on, on this. I mean, you've got to, one, make the decision, we'll enforce it our way if we can. Mike, you've been working on this, so I assume that legally we can stand behind this. You feel pretty good legally?
Yes.
Is there a motion we pass this ordinance?
I second a high order. I second.
Good, I'll, I'll, I'll read it by.
Yes, sir. I'll read it by high order.
Have a motion in second? I have. Section seven, A, Mike, is your, is your Sunday, special hauling permit, does that actually exist? I know we talked about this before.
We have one, but, uh, you know, again, that's one of those, uh, uh, ordinances that's hard to enforce because somebody could, you know, be in and out before you ever noticed it. The only way that we would know that would be if somebody voluntarily came in and said, I, I need a hauling permit or if, uh, for example, uh, one of the police happened to see a gun truck running in a, in a residential area and, and report them, but that, that's the only way that, that we would know about it.
Okay. Exists?
I think what you're talking about is a hauling permit. This, this refers to special hauling.
This is the, this is the hauling, yeah, says special hauling.
And it's a separate from the other?
I don't know what that every one special hauling permit is.
We probably need, I'll, I'll get with your opinion, look at this and have one, and if we're in habit of orders, we need to make sure that we have that available, obviously.
And it seems to me like the last one that I saw had special hauling permit.
I, I think it does because I think back when there was rocks being hauled out of Deerwood, I think we crossed this bridge. Okay, we do have a motion in second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Meeker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
And Terry?
Yes.
Yes.
Inadvisable, an ordinance with killing ordinance number zero, zero, naturally run one, providing standards for possession, storage, transporting, handling and use of explosive material, establishing certain conditions relative to that action of explosive material declaring the emergency.
Number two, three, Sonny and I have worked together on this. Those two, I believe, Sonny have been resolved or in the process of being resolved. Is that correct?
Yes, uh, Mike, the, uh, item number two is the, uh, we have proposed a resolution for the condemning of the structure on, at number ten Town Square. That property has been purchased by a, a financial group out of Texas. I've been in contact with them. We do have the power turned off over there, so the threat of, uh, uh, fire is, has been reduced. And, uh, they assure me that they are, uh, actively considering selling the building and, uh, I told them that if it's, uh, that we don't want them to crack the people on it. We have issues with it, with the structure and they, if they don't sell it fairly quick, then they need to repair it. So again, I apologize for that and, uh, always have on our own right. Uh, item number two was a, uh, condemning of a structure on Rainy Drive. Mike and I are, are.
Number three.
Excuse me. Or, yeah. Uh, Mike and I are working on that. If this changes the state law, we want to look at, make sure that we're on firm footing before we proceed on that. And so again, I'd like to have that table. And item four is a condemning of a structure on eleven hundred South Coker. We all know that the house that we're talking about up there at Spirit Court and, and Coker been there for some years. Uh, we are trying to determine what our next step is on there. There's been several attempts to reach the lady that owns the, uh, property and she will, uh, either not pick up a certified letter or if she doesn't pick it up, she doesn't respond. And so we've got to decide what we need to do.
I'm, I'm working on that. We should have a resolution next month on that, so I didn't have that thirty days, but Sonny and I have been on all three of these.
Yeah.
And I have all of the information that I need to take care of the Coker Street property.
So again, I'd like, like to have that table too, so those three items I'd like to take. But, uh, again, if, if you've noticed up on North Main, we're having two buildings that are cropping pretty quick and, and, uh, down, being hauled off in the neck when this came out. That's been an actual three years.
Before I forget, you said that that, that bill did pass?
Yes.
That's, that's right.
Oh, yeah. I mean, it, it's devastating. How was that made? A bill was passed by the, the, uh, House and Senate that basically says that the municipality cannot regulate, uh, what, uh, a residential uh, or a garage type structure can be built out of or where it can be placed. So in other words, if you live in a subdivision that doesn't have a covenant or doesn't have a, uh, active B O B that somebody could move in a container next to you from plumbing and heat and wiring to it and call it a house or they could build a, something out of tubular and cover it with tin and, uh, plywood and call it a storage room.
Now, I don't know if plumbing and wiring scenario you just gave there, it was still codes have to pass.
That's what I'm saying, that, that's the only thing that you would be able to do. You would have to sell a permit for, uh, wiring and plumbing. They have to meet the.
Another waterway.
Yeah, but the, the outside.
You can have setbacks regulations and so forth, but, uh, as far as regulating what the size of the house is.
The way I read it, the setbacks are not, I don't know that we can, we can enforce setbacks. I think the only thing we can enforce is easements. I mean, you don't, is that just residential?
Do I?
Is that just residential? Yes. And we still, we cannot, and I think I've asked this before, in our subdivision regulations, we cannot require that subdivision when it's being presented.
we cannot require that subdivision when it's being presented, go ahead and put in place the covenant and property owners association, is that correct?
Yeah, uh, of course, most doesn't do, right, but the problem with a property owners association is after a couple of years, people start cropping out, but by law, even if the property owners association goes away, you are a property owners association, but the problem is that instead of somebody, if it comes to a lawsuit, it says they're pursuing somebody, it's you against your neighbor, that's the quick thing of the P O A, but, uh, you know, all the subdivisions that we have, we have in Greenwood in the last ten years have a covenant on there, and, uh, it's like Deerwood, when I lived out there with Deerwood, they were about covenants, but their P O A went, went away, and all of a sudden they were outas built out there with the siding and, and different things like that that wasn't approved by the original covenant, so nobody wanted to sue a neighbor.
The P O A usually go away when there's no money, when they're not taking care of anything, there's not dues paid, being paid, those which go away, they don't need, when there's money, they usually need.
But the covenant still stands, but we don't enforce covenants either.
Or somebody to be in charge of it.
But if there was some way we could force them to have a P O A, a due paying P O A, we could require that P O A to take care of the detention areas and retention areas and signage.
I don't think they know what you do, that I said, I don't know whether it's regulated.
You know, the, and the areas actually wanting places like that, that's not a concern, I mean, it's, it's the Bell Edition, it's the old Hackett area over here, the, uh, and the Wood, Greenwood West where people have lived there for years and got their, uh, money tied up into a house, and there's an empty lot next to it, and somebody could go get one of these storage rooms, uh, from, you know, down the road and pull it in there and call it a house, and.
Well, the past legislature has been weakening the powers of the city and it looks like the present one is too.
Well, this was from the Supreme Court of Arkansas, they ruled in a, a case dealing with, uh, second class cities incorporated town, but they had no authority to regulate, and they, legislature decided, well, that's, that's what Supreme Court position is going to be, and that is apply that across the board to first class cities.
This is pushed real hard by the Home Builders Association, and the municipal league did not, wouldn't come out with a, uh, opinion on it.
They remained.
They remained silent, and, and you know what that means, uh, and, and I'm very disappointed in, in our representatives, I'm disappointed in the municipal league because to me, they stab the, the people that live in these other smaller areas that aren't covered by, uh, covenants or subdivisions, stabbing them in the back because, uh, it's just not kind of good law.
We looked at.
Significant lower complaint.
We, we have finally, when Sonny, I tagged him this year with, go do what we need to do to clean some areas up, and he's done an outstanding job, and you see three items on the agenda table, we're working on it, there's been other things taken care of, and it's not to demean anybody, it's just to clean up things that you could clean up, and this is just working against it, I even heard today that it was originated, Mike probably knows a bit a lot much better than I do, so that it was almost an out of state thing, somebody just paid, pays to.
Yeah, it was cut.
Cut basement, and so this piece of legislation is a piece of work, to say the least, but well, everything we're doing is trying to make it better, and it just go by the wayside.
The Dartmouth Land Association, we kind of member of, was totally against it, uh, they contacted representatives and, and representative fellows that we don't know who they are.
When you look at, uh, a lot of folks, their, their homes, their, their biggest asset.
Exactly.
And you kind of put that in a.
This is one of the people that build, build such anger home, you know, that's who, who did this, and, uh, you know, I can name you all four, five of them, you'd recognize everyone of them, but, uh, if, if they apply the pressure and work, we call the money.
How'd our legislature vote?
Both of them voted for it. Uh, I contacted one, he voted for it, he said, don't worry about it, there's going to be some amendments on there and it'll clear everything up, and I said, you voted for it before you saw the amendments? He said, yeah, I trust them. Yeah, okay. The other one says, I voted for it because it's going to pass anyway and I don't want to make anybody mad.
What a little.
But then.
It kind of makes you wonder why you can have a landing apartment after this.
Well, it, it affects the accessory building, uh, ordinance of ours, it doesn't, doesn't affect the subdivision regulation all that much and all that, and, uh, Robert McKinney and I are going to go over this line by line with our accessory building, and then we're going to go with the mic and, and get everything verified, but that's, that's the, the heart of the, the accessory building, you know, we strive to keep these metal leaning tools out of the city, uh, it opens up for that, uh, we, uh, we had a building permit that didn't lay over two hundred square foot, had to take on the appearance of, of the house, you know, and we were, we were lenient with that, appearances and things like that, but I thought I was victor now.
Fortunately, most people that build, we would want to have their places look pretty classy and, uh, keep, the accessory builders hope they're going to stay, unless we start letting a bunch of regulations get weak, then we'll start getting some open air plans here.
So, the regulations are not weak, they're gone.
They're gone, yeah. I'm not counting those regulations.
Who are the, who are the companies that were pushing this, were they out of state entities?
No.
Slight. Lindsay?
E R C.
E R C?
Yeah, a big lot of that. In fact, the two, two senators and, and your representative that introduced the bill, both of them building.
Sure. And E R C probably has some pull there local company.
Oh, yeah.
Got a lot of stuff all over the state.
But that, name of that thing, uh, again, two, three, and four, like, have a table, and, uh, Michael and I will continue to work on that and, uh.
Are they all taken, third notice, you want someone drawn in one table?
Let's take all three of them before I.
Yeah, then I can update, update next month.
So, all of them will be on the next agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah, I anticipate that number three, it probably won't be in the world we can do about, uh, number two, I'm not forcing itself out, and number three, I do think we'll have action to take on that.
Which one you said we have?
I think it's on number three.
The only thing about number three is that they, they built this into the city street right away.
That, that may be the only thing that we've got to go, it looks horrible, but.
Oh, yeah, and it's massive.
Yeah.
I'm going to go through the table, all three items, please, Mike. Thank you. A motion?
Thank you.
In a second. Take all three items.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes. I have one more minute, do you time it, Mike? Okay, go ahead and notice.
Some good news.
I was, uh.
Is that one of those storage buildings?
Yeah, we, uh, we went through a, a pre-construction meeting the other day, and there was a few, a few things that we would like to be changed, and, uh, Spirit had some, Tim and all that, I went up to the engineer today, they redrew it, and so, uh, to, to what we asked for, in fact, more than what we asked for, there's, you know, I asked you about the possibility of, of a change there, but, uh, we're supposed to get the construction plans on it probably in the middle of next week, and then we'll have another meeting on the construction along with their, uh, construction people and go from there, so.
And we asked what's changed specifically, wasn't anything with the inside of building right?
No, 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 you know, that's, that's cookie cutter.
Well, I mean.
Yeah, those are, those are the best ones to work with.
We did ask for bigger boots, but I don't think.
No, I don't think we're on there, you know, uh, Spirit needed a turnaround, uh, behind the buildings and things like that, Tim had some, yeah, fire hydrant, and Tim has some issues on the, you know, water depth of the water line, and, uh, so they, they made those changes like that, and, uh, they sound like they're ready to go, sir.
Did they give you an idea of the time?
Not yet.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll probably know more about it, I'll, I'll try to pin it down at the next meeting, you know, with the time.
Their plans are all standard, they just, they just conform to our, just whatever regulations.
Yeah, it's kind of like Casey's and, and Tractor Supply, they came in, you know, this, this is box A, it's B, and C, where you get to B, and, uh.
Do they have any problem with our landscape plan?
No, no, in fact, uh, the plans that I got, uh, this, this is going to be a better landscape, uh, Waffle House, as you've seen, and also, uh, the, uh, the side of the side is going to be different, I guess, full of time.
Ready for their tax dollars?
Exactly.
We're ready for their walk.
The good news is, ladies and gentlemen, and I like this one, I don't know, Rob, Dow talks so long, keeps us late, I just didn't use it, we can all go to Waffle House because that's the deal, that's the good.
If we can get through this topic.
Sorry, Rob, you first.
If we can get through this topic.
I'm first.
If we get through this topic. Thank you, sir. New business number five is a clarification of procedural rules, this was brought to my attention, uh, recently, that we need to make sure, and when I say we, I'm talking about me as much as anybody, all of this, this was put in place, you don't have signed a copy, but this was put in place in January of this year, right? And particularly, A, ten, during council meetings, council consider only those matters placed on the agenda, and I don't, I think guilty of, uh, maybe even pursuing a vote or at least being part of, uh, things that were necessarily placed on the agenda, we make sure that we're following our own procedural rules, but.
Doesn't that, you have the ability to add?
Yeah, if, if you add it, and there was a particular time that we might, might have added something, so, if you add, yes, absolutely.
We're, we're in here to say you can add.
The adding, uh.
Agenda additions?
Yeah.
Agenda additions.
Uh, sorry.
I don't know what that is, I read it. Excuse me.
Section five.
Section five? We're presenting items to be added to the agenda at the meeting, shall state the topic to be added only with no discussion, discussion for that item will take place when the item is addressed during the business session. It doesn't say where, I mean, you could add it at the beginning of the meeting, or you could add it in the middle, right?
Correct.
Or you could add it at the very end.
I'm, I'm referring to something that was never added.
And we didn't, did we discuss it?
Oh, yeah.
Well, our agenda also says this applies to the agenda additions, so it can't be added at a certain time.
Well, and we're already through the business items.
Right.
We're through.
I mean, I'm assuming the agenda is this piece of paper, not just the old new business. I don't know what that is, you don't say it's the.
Agenda is the whole thing.
The whole thing. Agenda is designed to be right here before the business starts, after your question. It does say where we could add additions to the agenda, right?
Again, this is not, this is just pointing out that we need to make sure that we, me, Tom has agreed to shoot through a rubber band.
So, there's no, no rights to amend this, right?
No, no, just, we're pointing it out, okay? Just a reminder, friendly reminder for all.
That, uh, yeah, bring up an item, you have to officially bring it up, and that.
If you want, if you want it to be discussed and voted on, we need to add it to the agenda.
The whole business starts.
The whole business starts, yes.
The fourth, the very beginning of the.
Are you ever.
The fourth is?
The fourth.
Yep.
Before what?
Basically, agenda additions, I mean, that's the place to do it.
What a gas. You don't know your mother.
Well, I think that the recommendation would be if, if we're done with business items, if something is brought up that we voted on, probably needs to be attached to the next meeting, yes?
Correct.
Or may.
Point, the point is that you don't do it at that meeting.
It's sure discussing, in council form, it's sure discussing, but we can't vote on it.
Thank you.
Right.
You want to make sure this side.
Did you hear that, gentlemen?
Yes.
Okay.
If it's in council form, we can sure discuss it, but we can't vote on it.
Correct, and, and this, it's always.
We're not.
This, I'm slapping my own hand here, okay? To make sure that this is followed, okay? Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, others?
Apology, Mayor.
No, 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 you're fine, that's good, we're good, as, as your counterpart and others said, we're all happy.
We're all happy.
All good. Number six, ordinance for new business with best fours, uh, this is the same type of ordinance that we passed for other businesses, new business with, for instance, folks that are part of the city, all I guess is that it's, they're employees for sure, so, this is what Daniel, Daniel recently purchased, uh, best fours.
I'll make the motion we adopt, oh, put this ordinance on for the first reading by title one?
Now, let's, let me ask you something about these.
Yes, sir.
Let me read it first and make sure we're asked a different question. It just, I, I know what the, I know what the premise on these are, we've got one for Lance, I think, and we're all, it's sort of self-employed and elected, but it's not saying we have to use Lance Roden.
That's what, we're, we're, no.
Authorize a secret agreement, contract.
And we're aware that these people are also elected.
Right, yes. No, by no means does this walk us into behind even anything with best fours.
Well, it, it almost took weeks when it says, in wide length availability of flooring businesses in Greenwood and surrounding area, hereby, the council hereby authorizes the agreement to contract a new business with Daniel and Daniel best fours, it's authorized in the statement. I would issue.
Yeah, I see.
And it might, it might.
But it's like we shall.
Right, good.
So, if we don't do this, the legislative audit could raise a flag saying that you're doing business.
Let's do this, right. I second the motion. Turn the motion to second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Is Terry?
Yes.
Now, there's no reason for an emergency, or receiving bidding on something.
Oh, so we're, we're coming flooring projects.
This is kind of.
It needs to pass today, because we have a check issued today for something.
And then we're waiting, second, third reading. The motion, wait.
Say.
In a second.
Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
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 Baker?
Yes. I'll make the motion that we adopt the ordinance.
And the merge block?
In a second.
Say.
Let me, yeah, in a second.
And the motion to second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Terry?
Make the motion we adopt the merge block, say.
Motion to second to adopt merge block.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Terry?
Thank you.
Number seven is, we finally get to talk trash, thank you very much. We have a couple of representatives, or maybe two or three, I can't remember everybody, I appreciate you guys being here and being, uh, leaving through executive session and all that, and everybody else, but if I, if with the councils, we have, Tom and I have a couple of things to say about this contract that we have and what maybe we should add, that sort of thing, but if you guys want to speak, now would be the time, if you don't want to, or you just want to make the presence known, either anybody, if you would just step up and give us your name and some trash talk.
Quite, and I have to talk about trash, we're always at the end, so, we're used to, I'm Jason Fitzgerald with Central Arkansas Recycling and Disposal Services, otherwise known as Cards, so, most people just say Cards, I just recently took over the Ozark I just recently took over the Ozark contract, where they had something similar to this, they had fifteen days to take over a contract, or your current provider left town. We know what it's like, we know where you're at, and we're willing to help, so. I'll leave the card for all you guys after the.
Part of the time, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I'll leave the card, one of my cards, the cards. Thank you for the opportunity to come, and I look forward to it.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, where are we at?
Yeah, let me, yeah, let him speak, just, and then I'll do just that his or her, I may should have been first, but.
So, I'm Keith Moore, MSG Waste, just wanted to thank y'all for getting the feedback to this so quick, and getting an opportunity to have a contract. We recently put in a shop in a full-length facility here in y'all's town, and we'll be adding more, more trucks and more stuff to come, so look forward to moving to business and look forward to the contract. Thank you.
You're in the city limits?
Right outside of city limits, just the opposite side of the road from the city.
Is it more of a shop?
City limits, that's a.
Yeah, you should be in.
That's by the industrial parks.
Are you in the shop, you're not?
Used to be a mechanic shop, you own a field dish. Two oh eight where.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Two oh eight where, right?
Kevin Gardner, Orion Waste Solutions, well, may know us in the waste solutions. We have an operation in Des Moines, Arkansas, we have seven municipalities we serve in Davis, Arkansas. We also have a facility in Vanirin, Arkansas, on Fourth Street, so not too far offside there. Thank you for letting us come out and talk to you all this evening.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so, the council, I'll get you up to speed on what's the situation is, council, and those in the audience tonight. We currently are contracted with Alzes Sentitation. There was discussion and vote to end that contract, to take the clause, if you will, in our contract, current contract, that gives either party, either the city or the vendor, a thirty day, with a thirty day notice to end the contract with no particular reason. That's, I know that's kind of paraphrasing, but, so, we initiated that, part of the contract. I called Alzes Sentitation, informed them by phone, and Mr. Hamby provided a letter of force to send them, and we did that through my office, so. What we did was, by the council's discussion and approval of doing so, we initiated the thirty day, but we gave them until June one to be finished, if you will. We've not spoke, I've not heard from Alzes Sentitation, they are still currently picking up our trash. I believe, if I'm right, Mr. Hamby, they can, after thirty days, they can be done, period, or they could stay until June one. When I first initiated the contact with Mr. Alzes, he seemed to have the interest of being in on the rebidding of this, and I said, that's certainly your, you can do that, so, I haven't heard from him since. But that's where we are, is that, get you up to date? We have not prepared the going specs to give them to go out yet. Tom and I talked quite a bit about this, and thanks to these gentlemen, I don't know who told me water, or I think they all kind of echoed the same couple of ideas. Our contract is missing a couple of things that they seem to think should be in our contract, and one being a one-year lockout, if you will, for the vendor. As in, they cannot approach us, they cannot come to us the first year, once the contract is signed, for any rate increases in their rates, no matter if the, if the standard, landfill increases, or fuel cost, doesn't matter. They can't come to us, I guess they can come in on day one of the second year, but nothing can be done or requested in the first year. We think that's a good idea, we intend to add that, with council's permission. Number two, brought to my attention, is we had no fine, or penalties for, I may be wrong on this, but I think basically for lack of service, or bad service, or things that are going wrong. As we, as we're picking up our trash. Is that the right way to put that, I mean, it's kind of.
Remedies for quality.
Yeah, yeah, so, things aren't, you know, if we can fuel all over the place, or deep, or. What, hydraulic, well, thank you, then we can look at that, and I understand, and from talking to these gentlemen, because they've been all very upfront with me, and I appreciate that conversation with all of you, and I apologize to you for this regard for not giving back to you, it's been kind of hectic week, you probably learned tonight, but. They've all called me and talked to me, and they know that we've not gone out for bid, that they're all showing interest, and I told them, if I were them, I would help the council and get in front of you guys, and let you put a name on the face, so. Those are the two major things that, other than that, I think our contract is pretty good. There were some questions, if you could, if these guys wanted to ask, or I'll just say, I informed them, I hope I informed all of them, that there's a five percent, I don't know if we call it a discount, if you're with a business. Yeah, a buffer, the bidding process, if you're within the city limits, you have that already, automatic. So that question became, is it a requirement, some has asked me, and I think it's a good question, is the, I guess that prompted me to tell them that, but one of the, a couple of questions were, did they have to, according to our contract, and they all think have it, I believe. Is it certainly a requirement, it will remain a requirement, to have an office in Reddard, Arkansas? I know we put that in there for a reason, back in the day, I know what the reason was, but it was pointed out to me, and I don't disagree with it, that if it's just an office where somebody's answering a phone, that really, and I think one reason we put it in there, remind me, correct me, is if we were trying to make sure that that was the place that our residents could go pick up their recycling bins.
That's true.
Okay, so, but the point that was brought to my attention was, if it's just, if it's not anymore than that, or if it's just, and that could, may be the reason to keep it, I'm not suggesting we remove it necessarily. But if it's just a place to answer the phone, let's just say they're in, they're answering the phone in Vanirin, or Alma, or somewhere, and that's where their truck, wherever their trucks are, is where the service is going to come from. If we have a problem, we called an office, agreed with it, and they have to turn, you know, it's still going to take X amount of minutes or hours to get a truck where their trucks are, unless their truck's here, I mean, that's different. So, that was asked to me, and I thought I'd pass that on to you. We're not here to award a bid, we have to put that for bid. I think we talked about this a lot, almost as much as the demolition stuff. We don't have anybody recalling trash, not only them, I mean, trash with a T. Okay, never mind, scratch it, April Fool, like, not Matt Dan. So, that's it, that's where we are, we need to get it out, I don't, again, I've not heard from Alzes, if they're going to drop us, period, in thirty days from when we notify them, and I don't remember that date, Rob, but it's coming up. These gentlemen, from what I understand, and they can, you know, correct me, if this is not correct, but they've all stated that they can, there was some concern that just anybody could come in in thirty days, and I know that was a big concern tonight, that we voted on this. They reaffirmed my faith that they can, they could probably be here the next day, if we have to have them, they quote unquote, they'll not leave us hanging, and it won't be like New York, or many years ago, or Tammy picking up the trash. She said she will not slay, but she will drive it, so, anyway. And again, we've discussed, the city, the city, and all these gentlemen know that the city has discussed, council has discussed, taking this upon ourselves. It's not a real exciting thought, but, you know, it is a thought, I think we should do our diligence and look at all possibilities, but they are here to say, if I'm not mistaken, we're ready to rock and roll for you at any moment, pretty much, I mean, I'm sure there's something. And with that, speaking a lot for them, they've all said, you know, we'll be there that day, and call us, we'll be picking it up as fast as Alzes was doing, because they knew the routes and we don't, that's a learning curve, obviously. And, prices, and we don't, we don't, we're pretty hard sure we're not going to get the same price that we had, and nobody can do it for that, we can't do it ourselves for that. That's what I have on it.
Some of the bids going out, is where?
We need to do it quickly, if those two things that I mentioned are acceptable to the council, with the, hopefully you give them a contract, you're right, in your package.
Yes. So, you're going to keep the same contract, you want to add a one-year lockout and a penalty section?
Correct.
And what would those penalties be?
Yeah, we have not nailed that down, there's been a lot of things going on, but we would need, that's the thing that I don't have ready to put in there, other than that's what we need.
I'd like to look at that.
You're saying, you're talking about penalty section, or you're talking about spelling out reasons we can get out of the contract, spelling out the links and the trash out of the truck.
Is anybody willing to speak on that, I hate to put you on the spot, does anybody want to talk about what that means to you? Is that fair, or is not?
Briefly, I mean.
You're.
You said that the penalties are.
If you don't mind, tell us in New York, just so.
Jason with Cards, and the reason for the penalties is for, if we didn't get your trash picked up after some, after the first day, say it's, your trash pickup's Tuesday, or Wednesday, the trash wasn't picked up, and we can respond to a missed pickup, you have the ability to put a charge, or a dollar amount, to that figure, to say, hey, you know, this is a twenty-five dollar charge, or a two-hundred-and-fifty dollar charge, to the contractor. And you don't usually see that unless it's something that's really repetitive on your.
Or if there's any damage that they do, or high-ballast move they don't clean up, we have to take care of it, you can bill them for that.
Right. That makes sense.
I'd like to look at, I'd like to look at what the penalties should come up with, so.
Yeah, I want to get it to you, and maybe that we give you a call, once we get our notes under oath.
We need to call a special.
Call a special meeting. No, I don't think so.
Well, I guess one thing too, I guess a lot of what's happened to one of our fellow cities and stuff, I mean, is, I just looking at a recycling program, I mean, is that a, going to be a huge additional cost now, or is that, is that really even a true recycling program, is that even feasible now?
I made the statement to Tom today, that, you know, I don't know the way the world's going, or I say the world, things are going, I mean, it just doesn't, and I happen to be on recycling committee with ADEQ, that's right, I'm with ADEQ. Things are audited with that, and to say the least, I think with recycling, and what happens to, you know, what happened, you know, one of our biggest concern was, do we even know where our recycling is going, and is it really being recycled? We have, I'm not, I'm not suggesting at this moment that we do away with curbside, but we do have, and I've been told recently, that we have the best, one of the best recycling centers right here behind city, or behind our station over here. It is not a curbside, it's people bringing in, we accommodate, we've hired, we now have, not full-time, but part-time employee over there to make sure that people, people, even though they're bringing it in, they still don't want to recycle correctly.
Well, people are not educated, I'm sorry, I'm talking out of turn, but there are people in this area of the country, in my opinion, are just not educated, like people on the West Coast, people on the East Coast, people in the North. Okay, so that only leaves us Southern folks, right? But we're just not educated on how to recycle, I don't think it's a thing that we don't want to recycle, but they think, okay, we've got ten pizza boxes, so, okay, great, we're going to recycle these ten pizza boxes. Well, correct me guys if I'm wrong, if there's, if there's grease, or extra slice of pizza that was left in that pizza box, that's contaminated, and that contaminated a whole pile of cardboard for that day, is that correct? Okay, that's why we had to hire, people are kind of driving, and we're getting phone calls, because we had to hire somebody to part-time at our recycling center, because they were spending more time, the street department, going through the contaminated stuff, even if it was just aluminum. And she is doing an excellent job, so I just wanted you guys to be aware of what calls we get, and why it's going on, I mean, and they educate the kids in the schools, it's just people, I mean, they don't rinse out their glass, so, and they're so, well, I think we even got our glass container actually taken away, it got so bad, because it was just, it may come back, okay, it may come back, good. But if you don't rinse out your glass containers, it's contaminated, there's just a lot of, there's just a lot of things that you have to know before you can just say, oh, I'm going to recycle, you know, just like, I put a big trash can back in the break room, no, in the workroom, just for paper, just paper. I don't mean your plastic off your little silicone wrapper that goes in there, and that doesn't mean your plastic water bottle, I mean, paper, paper.
There's a dirty problem, put a trash can.
Well, but it says recycle paper only, you know, I'm trying to be a good sir, but, I mean, am I correct, is that what you guys think? Okay, sorry, that's my so-called, sorry, I just wanted to tell you.
So, to answer your question, and I believe it's not an answer necessarily, I don't know where we should go with this, to be honest with you, Tom, Tom has a number that he.
Mayor, we could do what we did last time, and just have to separate it out on the.
Yeah, yeah, and that's in the contract to do that. He, Tom put a number in for our benefit, the city's benefit, to allow for that, and he, there's a dollar, a dollar and a quarter, I don't know if that sets well with the gentleman in the back or not, but, so, you know, should we continue the curbside? And people are, have good intentions, there's no doubt, and I don't pick it up, although I need to, because two different mayors have recently elected a row on the back of trash cans, not trash cans, trash trucks, to make a point, so, I guess I'll have to do that in these days, but.
The difference between recycling and responsible recycling.
Right, exactly.
Only about twenty-five percent of the people in this city actually recycle.
Right.
So now we have to look at, is there a cost benefit, because the rest of the seventy-five percent of them are not responsible recyclers, and they're paying for recycling if they're not getting.
And we're charging everyone.
We're charging everybody.
Everybody pays.
Well, on the other side of that, when you say that there is all these, you know, rules and stuff, I was still under the impression that, you know, ours was so convenient, though, you just put out one tub, and you put whatever in there, and they're going to separate that out, that's what we were told.
That's where the additional cost comes in, because you're having to go to the sorting center, and a lot of that gets to the garbage, so, recycling, and if they bring it here, it's sorted here, and we know we've got good recycling, that's why we're trying to educate the citizens, don't bring trash here to the recycling center, because it defeats the purpose.
And it makes the people mad, when you tell them we're not taking your garbage, this is a recycle center, and she gets pretty, she gets pretty tasty with them, but they're learning.
But she's educated. I am reaching out.
Well, if you want a full-time recycle person, we can increase the hours.
And we have a grant to help. And so, I for one do not like or care to be taking services away, which is a good way what we're talking about, but it may make sense to continue our, again, what I'm told is a very good recycling center, yeah, or if you would come up, so, I'm sorry, I didn't think Tammy, because Sean was.
Sorry.
Burges Smith with MSG Waste, you were saying that a dollar and twenty-five cents, now is that the city actually furnishing the recycle bin?
We do now.
Okay.
Because we do that.
It's already out.
Without.
So, okay, okay.
We don't distribute them now, we're.
We even distribute them like that right there, you could send out a, you know, even when they come in, or you distribute them to each resident, you could put a pamphlet in there, or even. You can actually recycle what you cannot, I mean, that's one way of educating, you know, each resident like that.
And I agree, I mean, I visit my son, who lives in two or three different states now, and up north, they, they're strict, and you don't mess around with it, and I think they have recycling, a police officer would come to your house, but.
Well, Will just said, New Jersey, right? But if you get a fine.
Yeah. Yeah, I was up there one year, and just told myself, well, this isn't, no, it's not, no.
That discourages people from being recyclers, you know, how long, if I got my first fine, I'd throw everything in the.
Absolutely, Joe. You'll get fined, so, we'll let you get there and do that.
So, the one thing, when we have it with the general trash, it is a pass-through cost, we don't incur any costs, it's pass-through. If we, if we get away with that twenty-five percent, it would probably come down here, which is going to add more cost to the general fund. Or is all that solely off the grant?
No, it's not, it's fifty percent of the salary is covered by a grant.
Okay, so, but we will be putting more of a burden down here on stuff that comes out of the general fund, and even though that's kind of out of grant, the street department kind of does work over there, so, and it's fine, and I want it to continue, that's not.
One employee, and she's not, she works under Dennis, but she is a, but she's the only one that's.
She's under the general department.
You know, if we, if we bid it like we did last time, a lot of this discussion we're having now, we could discuss when we have a cost put on it, and then we can kind of figure out what that cost is. And so, I'd say just bid it like we did last time, so we can see what they're.
Yeah, it's broken, it's broken, just like.
The recycling, oddly, that person's choice.
Well, it still is, it's their choice.
It's a choice to do, those are paid for.
Because I'm paying for it, and I told you another time, I don't recycle.
You say you're paying for it, but those guys out there just heard Tom say, only twenty-five percent recycling, so those guys are over there going, I know that only twenty-five percent of the town I got to pick up, I don't have to pick up a hundred percent of the town, so I'm not going to charge a dollar twenty-five, I think I can do it for seventy-five cents.
Is that really what you're?
You sort of are, because those guys are there, know that only twenty-five percent of the town is doing.
No, you can sort out that, but anyway, I see my bill, everybody, it's on there.
So I have one other thing I'd like to be separated out, we still need to address.
I didn't get a choice.
And I'd like to see that, when we bid out, that that be sorted out, so we actually have a cost to discuss there, and there's reasons, let me have, let me have a minute. If, if we don't address it, and we have to address it, that's just part of a growing. If, if we don't address it, and we have to address it, that's just part of a growing town. If we don't address it, you start having these brush piles pile up, and then on a pretty day, somebody goes up there and lights a match. And then that's going to involve the fire department. And every time that fire department's called, we pay out the general fund, it's going to cost about three to four hundred dollars, because that's how many firemen show up. We've had pretty days where that fire department will get called out three to four times. That is not a pass-through cost, that's a cost that hits the general fund. If we, when we do this contract, if we put it out, and I don't know what these guys may come up with, they may come up with it's going to cost a dollar or seventy-five cents or fifty cents. Like, we can at least have a discussion and see what the cost is going to be. If we, if we do, I'm kind of like Lance had talked before about buying a place, but then after I watched what happened in northwest Arkansas with the Great American stunt dump, this was about a million dollars to put out, we don't want to be responsible for that. We don't want the city of Greenwood anywhere on that to where people are taking stuff out there and then somewhere it accidentally gets put on fire or we put it on fire, we don't want to have any part of that. And I don't want to end up like the city of Fort Smith, I don't want, I like the idea of our stuff goes somewhere else and another company's responsible for it. As you saw it happen with city of Fort Smith on recyclables, they're still in the lawsuit. So I don't want to have any part of that either.
I hear you, sorry.
Okay, I'm sure.
Okay, no, it's not, I, I think these guys can speak if they want to. Again, you're kind of on the spot and you're not bidding yet, but I have spoken to most of them, if not all of them, about the idea of limb pickup and nobody, you can correct me here, that nobody's anxious to get into that and does it now.
So you're saying nobody will bid on the contract if we put it in?
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying they may not want to participate in that part, I don't know.
They don't want to participate.
They're going to bid on the contract, I think.
They don't want to participate in picking up a citizen's refrigerator, they don't want to.
No, they do, actually, they all have, they actually have a once a month or two, whatever it is, once a year, two years, yeah, that's not an issue.
I'd just like to see it separated out in the contract, let's get a cost on it and see what that cost is, and then we can have a discussion on it.
Come up for an if you would, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine, Tom. One way that I've noticed with some smaller towns that we deal with is with brush and stuff like that, and if they give them a written warning, they go out, if you have a, even enforcement of it, a total enforcement, they go out, if you have all this brush, okay, we're going to give you two weeks to clean it up. That is the, the resident's responsibility as far as keeping their place clean, you know, things like that.
You're saying enforcement does not pick up?
What now?
You're saying enforcement does not pick up?
enforcement will actually, what they will do, they'll come and write you a ticket, and then what they'll do, they'll ask for their crew to come and clean it up, and then they'll send you the bill for it.
But they do a first pickup, yeah.
They do, yeah, they do.
And that is enforcement.
Yeah, they do. enforcement does, though, is they have the ability to take that and generate revenue. So they mulch it, compost it, and sell. They can't do that, so everything that you're dropping over there is lost to them and it's passed through directly to the citizens of Greenwood.
Is that true to everybody?
Most everybody, yes. Fort Smith is in a unique situation in regards to brush. What we could do is we could turn that brush into, we could chip it into mulch and we could sell the mulch. I mean, you don't have to burn it, you don't have to bury it, you could, you could mulch it. We've been already, we've been looking at ways to deal with the citizen. Now, yes, he's right, in Fort Smith, if I have large limbs and things that I want to get rid of, I don't want to put it in a four-foot bundle and put it out there every week, you know, until it's gone. I put it on the trailer and I take it down to Fort Smith's landfill myself, that's my responsibility. Just like it would be everybody here in Sebastian County, you'd take it there, do the same thing. But if you wanted to be looking at how do you benefit the citizens and provide an additional service, we won't go into whether we're providing something like that or not now, we could take it and we could chip it, we could get a chipper and an industrial chipper, and we could chip it away and give it out as, or sell it as mulch. Generate some, get some revenue back from it. It's, how, how do we want to approach it? Now, when we talked to them about it, not one of them said they wanted it to be on brush and limbs.
I've asked the street department about a chipper before, and maybe that was sound, and they just didn't want to have any part of it.
They have repot.
Dennis is not excited either, you can speak, go ahead. You can speak, Dennis.
Before the last budget, I did look at a chipper, so, and it did, the idea of chipping it kind of hung up in the cloud there for a while. So I did not follow through with the chipper. They are expensive, that's why I didn't follow through.
In some ways, I look at a chipper mulch program as being truly more recyclable than our recycle program.
Parks could use the mulch.
You know, there, and nobody said it yet, and I expect it's coming out here, but. I, I know that the whole limb pickup kind of became an issue with an ice storm, we did, because of Mississippi. But I for one, and you guys make those decisions, I don't, I'm in favor of the service, I think it's a good service. I myself got a warning, not a ticket, but I put, and I still got an argument, I think, in court of law, they don't pick up stumps. Well, I pulled up a whole tree and left the stump attached, so it's not a stump until it's cut off, and, am I right here? Thank you very much. So I got a, I got a notice on my mailbox that I, here's what you did wrong, it didn't say mayor, but they, they know where I live, and I'm, I'm just like everybody else, I got it marked, not bundled, stump, and in the ditch. So I may look, and they actually picked it up a little while later, and that's, I appreciate that, but I think it's a good service. I think, I think it's, do people abuse it? Absolutely, I know, I know that I can drive by a house or two that I have watched for many years, that they do not have that many trees in their yard. So they're bringing it from somewhere else and then maybe doing it for a living, I don't know. But I think it's important service, and I don't, I, I would love for people to look a little more into the chipper and, and we talk about expensive, nothing's cheap, but if you can sell it or even give it away to, I don't know, like I said, I think you're right, I think parks are, parks are, but anyway, that's neither here nor there, but I think if, if I'm right from the knowledge, and Altus is not here to say either way, but I don't think the trash guys are interested in that.
I'm happy Dennis would buy a chipper, and we can start giving it away to the citizens.
So a limb pickup in this contract, we distract that?
It's not even.
Can we, can we still attach that to our, our refuse bill, you know, as still as part of, you know, refuse, even though it's not necessarily that, it's still part of our.
Over the bill that we, that we pass on to the residents?
Can we say over the?
Well, if you're, if you're charging them forward and then selling it back to them.
You take it to the dump and they charge you, you pick up the compost and they charge you.
That's true. I guess you can, I mean, it was something that we are providing, you know, as a, as a service, but I'm thinking, you know, something that we benefited, and I think that was potential for, for fire, potential for, in the, in the ditches, you know, causing water problems, when we have air drains. I, I think we need, I think it's good.
I think it's, you can kind of, as a city, tack it on to the overall, you know, I mean, they have their second of the family now, and we also have another dollar and a quarter for, you know, reference.
We going to separate the old and the new?
No. It all goes in.
Yeah, this, uh. Tom has a question for you.
Do you have the capability and the ability then with your trucks to be able to even put a bid price out there for lawn and limb pickup? So.
Who you put price?
What you hurt?
I'd like to see.
Price, I may just go a little bit, but he wants it separated.
I want it separated.
Here's what it would be if it were just trash, here's what it would be trash recycling.
There you go, that's a simple, we had it, you bid on it.
Face time.
There you go, you don't want to do it, but you will.
You see the number, I mean, if it's fifty cents, here we go. And Loudon said, we can't touch it, I'm not buying a chipper, and that's all they're going to charge, and we move forward. Not just go back to buying a chipper.
Talking to Hannah, didn't.
Sorry.
I know a question, with that pickup, you don't add a bid on that, are we going to bring it to you guys to chip? Instead of disposing it?
You're taking, you're saying if they pick it up, they dispose it, right?
Yeah, we, we don't know what happens to it.
So, sorry. We should have somebody bring a mic to it.
You know, I know some cities have a two-time-a-year kind of system where they say, hey, and the city's responsible for picking up that debris, two times a year, I know, I live in Springdale, and if I call, I get two. So basically, you know, we bring it down at the end of the lane and they pick it up, and then I get to do it twice a year, whether it's pole or limbs, you know, that type of deal, so mostly green. Green waste is tough for trash companies to throw away, and that's what this is, green waste, because they don't make things like they used to. And I'm sure these guys can attest that when you put this debris in these trucks, there's a good chance that you're going to peel that thing or can over, you know, right on the side of these things. It's, you know, we're trash haulers, not necessarily limb haulers, and I can understand your, your want to get whatever you can for what you can, and I can appreciate that, and it's a, it's a free world, that's what it's all about, and like I say, you might not be able to do anything, but just to encourage you to maybe think about some of those other things. If you're wanting to keep your costs where they are currently or as close to them as possible, you know, recycling costs, it used to, it used to get about forty-five, fifty bucks per ton for co-mingle recycling. Now, we're charged as a company sixty bucks per ton just to dispose of it, where most of the time, it's only costing us about thirty-seven or thirty-five dollars per ton to dispose of trash. So the price of recycling, or disposing recycling has gone up, and the trap, price of throwing it away has gone down.
In Springdale where you live, who's doing that green haul that twice a year?
That's the city.
The city's doing it? What do they do with it?
They have a, they grind it up.
They grind it, and do they offer it back to y'all?
They don't offer it to me, but I think they use it inside the city itself.
They use it in their park system instead?
Correct, and now we own a class four landfill in Emerald Lock, and we do accept wood. The class four means it's not, nothing that comes through, it's pressable, so it's not like your MSW, like you pick up at your house, but like you see in these big open top containers, we take and re-grind shingles and then sell that to an asphalt type of product. We sell it to a lot of asphalt companies, go with the paving. We also do wood, we have wood recycling, we do, they, you know, we don't do whole trees, but if it's cut up and then something that we take to re-grind it and repurpose that to sell and colorize that as well, but, you know, you're talking about quantities. You know, we can't depend on everyone in town with other trees at the same time. The only way that's feasible is if you do it, you know, how much, how often. And so we can operate, no one can operate a business without knowing how much and how often.
So in Springdale, you, you've got the ability to call twice a year, could be in January, could be in May, but only twice. You know, that eliminates these Leroy Jamison's that are just constantly putting stuff out there because they're cutting trees and they don't have trees in their yards. And calling for limb pickup, and Dan's dealing with it.
Dennis.
Dennis.
I don't like Dan, Dennis.
I don't like Dan, Dennis, all right. That makes, kind of makes sense. Are the, some of the others to the south, maybe, Roger's still north, what do they, you got any idea?
I, I know that Kevin probably tested that, as far as what Roger does.
The city of Fayetteville has similar programs in Springdale, they miss to pick up limbs that they curbside when they're in the city. They're taking that good seal and they grind it, then you install it as a mulch back to the residents. They have free, when they get a wheelchair, they have free cleanup, they can actually just come pick up mulch for free. But other times they, they charge anyone that kind of share the half. And Rogers basically has a leaf cleanup where they pick up leaves two weeks after the fall season, and then those things to Tonic Town Landfill, for their compost facility, so that's a compost facility there. So we pay, we pick up and then turn it and hang it.
Tonic Town, or sell it back?
Tonic Town, no, Tonic Town landfill actually uses it in their compost.
Oh, in there, okay.
And then what they do is they use it for sowing and then like this.
Fayetteville, do they just do two, three times a year, they pick it up on demand, or?
You know, I, I don't want to test it out, I'm sorry, I don't know the exact answer to that. When I looked there, I believe it was twice a year you called them.
And they pick up, and then they grind it up and sell it back?
They sell it back, and then there's also some days they have free, and they just come out there and you show them your bed, the resident will be in your truck.
Twice a year is better than once a month.
Twice a year, that's, twice a year sounds appealing.
And I got, and I brought up a good point, thank you, you brought up a good point, we'll go, I haven't thought of it too much. I'm assuming it's, I mean, I'm not too smart, but I think limb is probably somewhat seasonal, I mean, am I right or not? And I mean.
Depends on, are there storms?
Yeah.
And then, and then spring, fall. Correct, they get heavier. And running around town right now, it's not really looking real heavy.
Yeah, sometimes you don't have a question, sometimes. Except when you admire a tree attached to it, so.
I'm just asking, you know, completely, because I did my research paper last year, some of my question marks were research paper anyway, on wildland urban interface. Our haul was after the ice storm, went from about twenty-plus qualifiers a year and less than ten a year. Like, has everyone been pulling it?
Yeah, I would agree, I don't think, I'm not interested in permitting, I don't know.
Dennis, if we went to citizens' calling, had choices two times a year, how would that, how would that affect your life?
I think we'd get a lot of phone calls because they're all used to it right now, and they're just going to have to do a little bit of retraining and stuff, because they are getting it right now for, and, and then it would take, take a little bit of training, but I'd like to see it.
And right now, you just schedule it, like, you got somebody goes out?
And it may take us two days, it may take us three, it may take us four days.
And you used to, I know they used to call to put on a list, and we don't even record that anymore.
We just drive around. It's a lot easier than, I mean, you got it, I got it, and then they, we pass that area, and they have put it, put it out that first Tuesday. Just we pass it, sometimes we'll go back and get it, but generally, we find that they said, oh, it was there, and it wasn't, you know.
Just for kicks, Dennis, how, I know you're not necessarily on that truck, and you probably shouldn't be.
I've been.
There you go. How, I'm asking for names, but are there habitual users of this service?
Pretty much.
And again, they, it's a different thing.
Again, too, you, you're, somebody you know, that people don't have that many trees, or are you having some commercial guys sneaking in all this?
Sure.
How do you control that, I don't know.
Just like it's just.
Bad, you're two times a year.
Yeah, this way you're going twice, and that's good.
And if people have a headache and there's other times here they want that limb that's gone out of their yard or whatever, then they'll get a trailer and a haul themselves, and it's that big a deal.
They just keep it in a pot.
Or just keep all of it.
That's when they like.
Which is, which is what you're talking.
That's when they light fire and then we get four or five phone calls on a Saturday.
Yeah, there's a, there's an action and a reaction, they say everything they're doing, so.
When you say we, are you tying up the whole department?
Absolutely.
For those two days, you got the whole department on this?
Or four.
They're just one in the town, the other way goes, we.
What we do is, but two guys here, two guys over there, and we get to town, the maker's circle, we, we do our areas, they do their areas. They write down the piles they can't do by hand, then the next day or so, when we're done doing our hand stuff, then we run around the whole town, we've written down the piles for backhoe, and then we get the backhoe, load the truck.
And you, and you'll not do away with all those phone calls anytime because we still get calls.
Oh, if they pass one, if they pass one by that is, that's too big for them to pick up, they'd better bet, we'll get a phone call. Chewing us out because those guys drove by and didn't pick up my pile. Well, lady, I'm telling you, poor man, you know, they'll be back, they probably pick, is it a large pile? Well, yeah, it's a big pile, well, they couldn't pick it up, they had to go get a piece of equipment.
If we went to two times a year, you continue your regular route, it looks like you get rid of those habitual guys that are cutting stuff and bringing it in. It looks like even if you continue your route, that it will slowly slow down. Because you're keeping up with addresses, I've been to this guy every month, he's passed us two times. You're passing by and leaving him a note or whatever in his mailbox, you only get two times a year. We'll continue to pick it up, it's going to cost twenty-five dollars every time, so.
And I see a code enforcement deal coming in too.
It'll be a code enforcement.
I know. You don't have to come up before anybody else.
So it's on our water bill, it'll say, kind of, you've got one more time remaining, and they'll pick up through your deal. So that's the way you can get up with it. Two, with the fuel you're going to save without driving through the town as many times as you are, you can buy a wood chipper. So it looks like you got a win-win on that. So it looks like you got a win-win on that one, so.
They have a fire rate to train.
There you go. Okay, good discussion. Yes, sir. When he said, you know, it's on your water bill, is there any kind of, do you see any kind of bill in there that says, you know, limb pickup, or this search arm?
It's just a, they, they basically call it a bolt pickup. It's considered anything that falls underneath that definition in our, in the contract under bolt pickup with the city. So it's just notated as you've already had one bolt pickup.
Will they charge you for a third time?
That's what I was gonna say. I'm sure they probably would, but I mean, things happen, I'm sure.
Would they put it on the water bill, you think?
That's how we pay it, so I'm sure they probably would.
Okay. Good conversation tonight. We got good ideas. Can only all of us pick up our trash like here, you know, take turns? You just forget to bid anything.
Can you do it? How can you not work? They're surprised.
Well, that ice cream is gonna be here in a little bit. Any other discussion about, any other trash talk? Thank you all for being here, I appreciate you very much. And we will get out our, our bid packet as soon as possible too, so everybody got to deserve.
I know you're on the short notice and everything, and there's a lot of questions and a lot of conversation on that board. I'm sure, I can kind of speak to everybody here, if you needed to have a work session, a real quick work session, have us all involved to help work through some of this, that dragging this meeting out so long?
Yep.
We'd be more than happy to come down and give our thoughts to, to help you with the bids.
We love long meetings.
We don't. We do not.
Thank you, that's a good, I appreciate that all, I think we'll take that into consideration for sure.
I wanted to let you know that the letter was mailed on March the fifth, to the office.
So basically, they will, they could.
They couldn't save.
We could be looking for something. You got your slinger?
I got it.
On, ready to go.
I'm driving.
I'm gonna get you.
You're driving?
I'm driving.
You're driving?
I'm driving.
All right, thank you very much. We're at the point of the agenda where it's a partner report, some questions for Camp Front Council. You see the partner head there for you, you know, we're sticking around in case you've got any questions, so. Anything from them? For them? For, have a question for who? Yes, yes, questions for the partner heads. Do I like to address, or ask the pump, do you listen, what are they on the? Cause those are the trend going here with our charts. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you. Tom, please.
Okay. We do have the new package, we have the city sales and use tax. There is a number that I'm gonna compare two thousand and nineteen to, so if you can see a trend in the city sales and use tax, it's not quite favorable. Right now, in the month of March, represents February, we had a point three percent decrease in year over year for city sales and use tax. Let's see, just before the drugs. Down on the bottom, you'll see that for the first three months in March, we have had an increase of one point five percent over previous year as a year-to-date number. Now, to compare that to two thousand and eighteen, which shows that two thousand and eighteen was a fairly decent, very good year. We, at the end of March, just for the month of March, we had an eight point two percent increase year over year. And for the year-to-date, we were five point four percent for the first three months. And we're down to one point five percent. So there is a decrease trend going on in the city sales and use tax. It's fluctuating, it's kind of sputtering a little bit, because we ended up, we started the year with a point three percent negative reduction in city sales and use tax year over year. February was two point two percent up, and we're down to one point five percent. Can contrast that, even though it's still positive, contrast that to the county sales tax, and you'll notice that the county sales tax for the month of March representing February's collections was two point eight percent for the month. And you'll notice that year-to-date, county sales tax is up three point seven percent. And just to give you the numbers from two thousand and eighteen to show how those compare to two thousand and eighteen, we were point nine percent in January, negative one percent year-to-date in February, and negative one percent in March. So March had a negative one percent of county sales tax reduction from our previous year. So we've gone from a negative one percent to a three point seven percent in county sales tax, just, just the opposite. I know, I can't, I'm not the economist that accepts, you know, what's happening with where the people are spending their money, but to me, what that sounds like is, there's a healthy spend in the, in the county of Sebastian, of which we are being pooled from and benefiting from. What's happening, though, is that spend is not occurring here in Greenwood, it's occurring somewhere else. So there is a spend, it's healthy. If both were down, you would say, it's suppressed, people aren't spending, but people are spending. Now, we just need to know what are they spending on, and what is it that they're going after in the county that we don't offer here in Greenwood, or why are they going outside of the city of Greenwood? So that's where economic development takes that number and starts really looking at what's going on. You are picking up revenue, but you're picking it up in a pooled percentage factor, so.
Like, we got the pizza market.
Yeah.
And they're not, not leaving. They're eating.
Mexican.
The county's got the beer market.
I'm glad we have so many economists on the town.
Tell me what I was, let me ask you this. Is, you're, I, you know, I'm seeing the numbers you're talking about. Is, is it, is resetting of a baseline?
All that's gonna do is, is give you more of the county, depending on how you're rebased, if you had a decrease in your census. That's just gonna give you more of the pool for the county. What I'm doing is comparing where are the dollars being spent? Not how much of that you've been from the county due to your census? Because if we have a census increase on our rebase, and our city sales and use tax is still going down, that means they're going outside of the city. That's the key you need to take away from here. Not whether the rebase, which only affects county sales tax, is gonna impact you. What you need to be thinking about is why are the dollars going outside of the city of Greenwood? What is it that we could offer to keep more of those here?
Well, I love this, sir, talking about the census per se, I'm just, I'm just looking at ten years ago, let's say, and how we've gained so much in tax dollars in the past ten years, but not, I didn't mean to use ten as a census cycle. But I see, I know, I understand the change, the percentages year over year are down, but the money is still pretty decent money for the city, so, I mean, I, I get the downward trend, but I, I don't know how I'm trying to, I'm in manufacturing, and I'm trying to, what, what we have is a quota, we have to make sixty parts a day. And after about two years, we, we can't make our quota, we just keep hitting fifty-seven. Well, we need to probably change our baseline to fifty-seven, that's always the plan. So we change our rate to, to what we're making, then we adjust. So I guess what I'm saying is, we're, we're still way over what I personally think, and I would say.
Where could you be? That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Where could you be? Why are you not capturing those dollars out, right here in the city? Now, what I'm also saying to you is that three months doesn't make a, make a trend, but I'm an analyst, and when I look for is the trends. I say, you can't ignore them. You have to know, get ahead of it. What is happening now? Don't wait until it's a catastrophe, but next year, we're, we're two percent down, and now all of a sudden, we're gonna try to react to that. I'm telling you where these numbers are going and what it's telling me. You can choose to accept that and go to economic development and say, look what this is saying to us, what, what can we do to reverse that trend? How can we grow the city to keep those taxpayer's dollars here? Or, you know, you can just hope that people come back to Greenwood and start spending their money.
I think that, I think we subconsciously always thought that we were living in a tight dream, because, well, we've always based it on a flat rate. And not saw all the fruits we've gained over the last ten years, we've, we haven't really bumped up our budget. Just because I, I think, whether we knew we're doing it or not, we, we felt like it was gonna weigh a lot eventually. And I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, we were making two hundred and forty thousand a month, and now we're making five hundred and thirty-eight thousand. That's pretty, that's double, of course, or triple, but.
Yeah, but look what your expenses are doing.
Right, I agree.
You're just keeping pace.
Yes.
What I wanted you to, you asked me a while ago, when we were doing budgets, should we not, because we had a three percent increase at the year of the trend positive for loop city sales and use tax, shouldn't we not budget flat, but budget it? And what was my response to you? I said that I was looking at the permits that were coming through from planning, and the permits, and the revenues for those permits in eighteen were down. That negative trend is parlaying into your city growth right now, and it is impacting your city sales and use tax. That's what you use to operate your O and Ms from. Fire, parks, all of departments depend on that. So you're either gonna cut people services, what are you gonna do if your city sales and use tax doesn't keep pace with the inflation of your expenses? You're gonna have to start looking at the expense line, not the revenue line. I'm saying, to run a city effectively, you have to look both at expenses and revenues, and your revenues are showing a negative trend right now. I'm not panicking, because it still is positive, but it's sputtering. And so you need to be looking at, is that indicative of what I told you about from what Sunny's permits were showing you from last year? So.
And you haven't seen the same trend in these three months ever here? Although you went back to eighteen and showed us.
You look at the graph, and the graph's got a lot of data.
Notice is that, I would be more comfortable with, oh, the, kind of the, you know, it was minus three in the city sales use tax, and it was kind of around a minus three, or whatever, point three in county, because that pace is kind of spread out evenly, you know? But when you see, one is a big increase, or I say, or ghostly increase, and ours is a downward increase, and I think that's kind of what.
If you can keep the money that's being spent, and like I said, it's a healthy spend right now, if you can keep it in the city of Greenwood, you benefit from that, because that comes dollars back to you with less than administrative fee. So that's where you gain the most, is in the city sales and use tax. Some people are saying, I don't wanna spend my money in the city of Greenwood because of whatever, they didn't pick up my trash. I'm gonna go spend my dollar in Fort Smith or in Barlow. We're going ahead, why don't you spend it in Sebastian County? We're gonna get some of that. That's the philosophy. If they really wanted to screw Sebastian County in the city, they would go spend it in Franklin and Logan County. But they don't, they, what they're doing is, they're spending, we just need to see how we can keep those dollars local.
Tom, you know how, you're talking about money being spent out, and we're looking at the figures. How can we get more detail to kind of figure out what they are leaving here for?
Well, wait.
We have some of that information on our.
Ezra data. I have, I bring the data, if you want it, I can get it for you.
It will tell you.
It tells you what we spend on, just about everything.
Details are ridiculous. I mean, it'll tell you what people are going to Fort Smith, by not being ridiculous, Aspen, almost, almost to that detail.
Almost.
And, and we know, I'm sorry, Tom, we know, we know for sure that, you said, and not that alcohol saves the day, and I'm not saying it should, or would, but clothing, for instance, I mean, if I need something to wear, I don't, I don't think about anything other than going to Kohl's or somewhere, and that's, because that's where you gotta go, or, I mean, going to Kohl's. So we don't have that, and the development committee is aware of that. And, and to touch tiny bit, not necessarily on the, on the dynamite issue explosive, but Sunny's point was well-taken with me for sure, that we, we still daily with what, not that you can, you should give away to bank, you know, to these people that need to come and do, we don't, I don't get calls from the clothing store, I don't know that you do, I mean, they're typically restaurants, but we've gotta work harder, and I say we, all of us to work hard to, but identification is, is in that register for it. It, it is really, really detailed.
And where, where can you access that?
We, it's on our website, but I can get you a hard copy.
We're on the school and website.
We got a big book.
Also, you know, just from our, Bob Tugler, you know, and he said that, you know, a town that's not growing, and I don't mean just to get revenues, but not growing, it's worse too, you know, is a town that's, you know.
Yeah. Not everybody's worse. Yeah, I mean, you know, and we gotta get on that, we gotta get on that horse pretty, pretty quick. I mean, we gotta, I, I've talked to, one second, I, I've talked to the judge in regard to our annexation possibility, to bring him, bring him in that court or whatever it is that we, we set, see fit to do. He willing to talk, although it'd be, he's confused that we're having to go to him before we go to GIS, but that's what GIS people are telling us. So we've really got to get that squared away and not keep messing with it. Yep, chief?
Well, there's, there's places in town that we can't develop right now because of the water issues. So we talked about annexation, but right now, we need to take care of, I had a gentleman come talk to me, who's trying to build a big subdivision outside of town, but he wants to build a couple of very large houses that we want to be able to serve up by Damascus, up in that area. And he wanted to put in a pond, and he says, can you do that? And I said, I can. That's not how we pump water, we just go off hydrers. But the problem over there is, we don't have the infrastructure. And then I went to the water, head of the water commission tonight, said, we need to have a form of bidding of how well you guys are gonna get us help over there in that area of water and sewer, because we're dead to water on that side. So if, go ahead, you annex some more, we've got areas we can. Right now, Sunny can't get us really permanent over there yet, but we can, since it's in, we don't have water and sewer.
When that's gonna be annexed, it plainly stated that for them, however, but here, there would be, you know, we, we wrestle with that, there would be essential service of water and sewer.
Yeah, but that's changed a little bit. Yes, Sunny, or no? I mean, I mean, that's not quite as.
All we have to provide is fire.
Immediately, you do.
Sure, immediately, but that, we annexed, that whole board, eight years ago.
There's a whole swath between ten spur and ten.
But don't we get our panel office, people that are holding us hostage with our water?
Well, I would encourage you.
It's progressing much at all in that direction. I mean, I don't know, it's just big.
And we're looking at other ways, possibly, I don't want anybody. But we're working, or he's working real hard on, on trying to figure that out. And I would encourage the council to either come to the Waterways or the Commission and listen and encourage these people, this, this commission, these commissioners that are up here. And I, and I get, I go to those meetings, I'm trying to go to all of them, I'll make them all in. And I know Greg's philosophy, or not philosophy, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but his concern is taking care of what he's got before he's paying too much, and not having so much we can't take care of. And I get that for sure. But for instance, on, and you're talking water, I'll talk sewer for a second. Sort of craft building, not, yes or no? Sort of craft building, we all know where it is. Out that way is, you're working on the done sewer, I mean, as far as now, correct? I mean, you really can't do all, Burton, I'm just throwing his name, because he owns quite a bit of property, not out there where he's doing his work, but that other section on Denver Street, that's a lot of land for somebody to come in, whether it's subdivision or, or, or business. No way you can build yet, because we don't have that. It's a lot of money, as you all know, to put in infrastructure. But you're right, until you do it, it's a rock and a hard place.
Why don't you know building with the other guys?
Huh? Well, that's a, yeah, we gotta address that for sure. But to bring it in, because you're talking about it, we, we gotta get our, that's in our own. And I'm not saying the Waterways or the Commission's not willing, I think they're showing the willingness. They have a lot of, Tom, how much money are we talking to the Waterways or the Commission spending this year on infrastructure?
Two point eight million.
I, I gotta, I should, I hope they spend and do it.
I'm gonna tell you, on your financials, capital improvement projects and capital expenditures, capital expenditures we've spent of our budget, eleven point four nine percent of eleven and a half percent. We've spent three and a half percent on capital improvement projects in the first three months, that was it, of our total budget, of almost five point three million dollars. So, we're gonna have some major stuff being done very quickly, or...
Or not.
Well, the, the first thing, the first thing about that is, the first thing you have to do is get it approved. After it's approved, then it goes to the engineer.
It takes a while, yeah.
An engineer can hang up to nine, ten months. We were ready to start on a place over here on Fort Main, that got held up, and it went in a different direction, and we're still working on it, trying to get one property approved. Other than that, ninety percent of the time, you're waiting on an engineer, you know? And, and they will tell you, it takes some time, they get ten months.
It's such a, it's such a puzzle to, to get things in the mood in the right direction, and to, to fix what Tom's, or to figure what Tom's talking about.
But, I mean, to me, you know, you're talking about, you know, which one's first, sitting on the edge, you know? I think, you know, if one part of the city wastes, till the other part, you know, gets this done, whatever, we're kind of just going back and forth, I think we still need to, you know, proceed, and it'd be best to, you know, go hand in hand, sometimes, I mean, those don't always work, you know? And I think, you know, and, I mean, our neighbor at the door, you know, says that if, if we're not going to expand, I know definitely that they're gonna expand, you know, down this way. And, and I see that, again, you know, yes, our citizens, we wanna collect that sales tax, you know, for them, you know? And keep them here, but also, it's, it's, it's commercial enterprises that, that keep them here, you know? And, and I think, you know, even on the busy corner, where there's per ten or seventy-one, you know? I think if you have that out there on seventy-one, I mean, I think you're, you're gonna be open to possibly more commercial expansion.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
One of the other things is your cash flow statement, that's right after your graph, for your city sales and use tax, first page, right after you're covered, it says, we, for the first three months, we ended March with eleven point two million dollars in our total funds, and we increased our cash totals by a net fifty-two thousand dollars over the first three months. In our budget, we were budgeted to be right at about nine million at the end of the year, so our trend is trending upward instead of systematically down by a spend. And as long as your spend is in operating activities, which is where we budgeted it, right now, it's, it looks more like we're stagnant right now. We're not actually putting the money into those projects yet, probably because when we budgeted, we committed two point eight million dollars. I even mentioned to you that I find it unlikely that all of that will be done or spent in two thousand nineteen. You're gonna be looking at a large carryover like you did last year. We brought over about one point five million dollars, one point one five million dollars, you're gonna, you're gonna be more than that this year, I'm guaranteeing it.
Anything else for Tom? The rest over here, if you need...
I have a question for Dennis, maybe slash Sunny. So, when a neighborhood comes in, I feel pretty confident, Sturridge's gonna be up first walking, about making sure there's no fire irons. And, pretty, pretty confident Greg, just gonna make sure the sewer's pretty good, and, and, but the streets, the streets bother me, because we've gone back and repaved a lot of streets out of newer neighborhoods. What, how, what are the specifications, what are the assurances that a street gets done right? We don't accept a street that's substandard, and what are their standards? Is there a compaction standard that's being provided by an engineering company?
Yes.
Before we say, you know, you can sell lots, you know, before the final plat's approved?
Like, like the Sean's subdivision out there?
Yeah, that's, that's the one I'm talking about, and I like Sean.
Absolutely.
But, I wanna make sure it's done right.
Jacob is doing a job, he's getting engineered, the, the ratings, the, the compaction, all that bringing up. I go out and, and look at what he's doing. He's putting in extra, uh, fresh drains to get rid of the groundwater, to keep that, those roads from sinking and giving up. He's going an extra mile, which is Sean is too, he's putting the money into it. The compaction is there, I'm getting all the data from that, and, and, and hands-on inspection.
Who do we get the data from, like, out of the legislature?
Um, I've, I've lost for words, but I've got, I've got it on, on the computer, so...
Okay. Do you testing, does a lot of compaction test, they call it, you know?
You did that through Dennis, like Buddy, Buddy, right there?
Yes, and Jacob's actually the one that stands the ticket, contractor.
And, and before, so before we give, so this is Sunny, so before the final plat is approved, you can't sell lots till the final plat's approved. So, before final plat's approved, and lots can be sold, we're looking at that engineering stuff that Dennis has got, and Dennis says, yeah, he's, he's, he's good. And we know we've got good streets, and we're not gonna be in there repaving them, fixing potholes in less than five or six years, right?
I feel confident that we're not.
Because he's had to deal with those now, I, I throw them down, I was informed by a citizen yesterday, or day before, I drove up to Westwood, and it's due literally to water out of a highway ditch, that's coming in and undermining our, our road. And, and on, but, it was suggested, you and I, I'm not there yet, but it's also suggested that that water's coming off of our own ditch, off of the Walmart, Walmart Road, what place that, wherever you drive, possibly, I, we'll get a look at it, see, yep. Deals with a lot of that.
Well, uh, Mayor, where do we stand with me with the judge as far as our next step?
I spoke to, I, yeah, I spoke to him, and just a couple of days ago, the day was, I wanted to have a meeting at Western Arkansas Intermodal Authority at Huckabee Center, and I spoke to him there. He just told me to get, let him know, I let him know, it was kind of a weird conversation, but I was with him quickly, very soon, maybe, maybe next week. Tried to get him to come here, so, or if not, we'll leave it off of Sunny, I'm going physically. So, quick, I don't have, I don't have that date set, his, his calendar was not, he did not have his calendar ready, so I can't tell you right now.
He said he has a copy of the proposed annexation, so, I mean, he, he knows what we're looking for, and, and like that, and like the mayor said, normally, go through GIS, and then go to the, to the judge that's down there for cause of where this was, and all that, they said they would prefer to, with the judge, and his approval, then come back for that. And so, we, the mayor and I talked to the judge, and he says, had several questions. Why are you coming to me first? I said, well, the GIS that's got to you, and, well, what do you wanna do this for? And, and he finally, he says, okay, we'll give them, get the mayor, and, you know, get your people, call my people, and we'll set up a meeting, and that's kind of where we are right now.
I, I gotta catch him in the right move, too.
Yeah.
Is we're gonna release the judge and ask for annexation permission?
We would nor, yeah, we normally would, I mean, you gotta, they have to release it.
Yeah, they're giving it.
They could, they could tell you, no, the county. So, but it used to be, as he wanted out, they used to, to do the opposite of GIS, but now I guess to make it true, they're, they're not gonna mess with that, any judge or county can turn and say that.
Yeah, I think a lot of, because it is such a modern area, that the GIS doesn't wanna go there and, and prove that each one of the legal descriptions are correct until they know, you know, get the approval from the judge, then they'll go do their, uh...
So, all those standards that we threw around last time, we tried to annex and chicken out for some reason, that we, the, surrounded by the city limits, gateway entrance, all those are out the window now, tell me judge approval, we still have all those.
No, they would...
We would still have to do it, but back then, it was the old way, you know? We would've, we would've, uh, asked for it, he would've approved it, then we would've gotten elected, and, and, you know, that's, that's the way that would've worked, but they turned that around.
He would've still had to done it.
Yeah.
In fact, he, I'm not saying he, but the county, I guess, there was, there was somewhere recently that they, he...
Rudy's, Rudy's is one of them.
It was, yeah, it was Rudy's that I said, and said, you know, we, or they were asking on our behalf if we were willing to annex it, and that was turned down at the time.
But we, and they called David Sutter and all, so, we'd have to go through all that, like, this way.
Go through...
No.
The judge and...
We, we, we were surrounded.
Yeah.
You know, we had...
Right, yeah, there's cases where they want, yeah, I'm sorry.
Seventy-one corridor, we had, we had ten spur, so that was the, the circular part of it, so, that was a easy done, you know, being like, valid, we wouldn't go out here and do valid, we'd do, uh, ordinance would be done.
That was the law, I'm not sure if they changed it, they were working on more restrictive stuff, so...
You have no doubt.
I said that that was the law, but I think they've changed it with that, because they get much more difficult.
Who knows?
Who's the, he said, the judge says it's their people, who's their people, the county judges, uh, period? Do they have a planning corps guy, or do they have more than...
Court, court. And I don't, I don't know that he asked you all across the court, I think he would, he might have...
Well, he was, he was even asking at, at this meeting in Fort Smith, or Jack Cross, he was talking to me, he's, again, you gotta kind of get him in the right move, and he's like, oh. He said, I don't know, I, I, I don't, I didn't know, I gotta have a hearing, or I gotta, are we gonna do a vote, or like, I just wanna talk to you about what you think.
Yeah, he was like, again, like the great, he made a decision button right there, you know, that was it. So, he was the judge and jury on that decision.
You know, a lot of them was played, but what's...
We don't have to, we don't have to all yet, we don't have to be put on the, the agenda of the court or court to proceed with this part.
I don't know, shall I say we're...
Yeah, I don't, I know the old way, you did not have to do that, unless you were petitioning to come in, they're only having to give. But I, I was told when I was listed to the commission in January, that all that is gonna be changed, that they were, they were gonna make it more difficult to annex. Now, what, what legislation, what, what, I have no idea.
I have the, the latest move on from the municipal, you know, how to annex, you know, that's what I would buy.
Yeah, that's what I picked up, they told me about, what's left in the trash, because June is gonna be changing before change, yeah.
So, does it be good luck to try to get them on hold before June, or?
Well, I, I think the legislation is probably gonna already be in place, so I just need to educate myself.
I've, you know, I've probably followed all the, the bills as they're going through, and, and I haven't seen anything on annexation this past, you know, to me, there were two bills that affected municipalities this year, and the one we talked about earlier was one of them, and there was others that's kind of looked like you, but I haven't seen anything as far as annexation, and I thought was a, a big change. You never know.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, council forum.
Did you guys? I have one more question. To the sewer, hey Greg, uh, Tom, the amount of expenditures y'all were doing, capital improvement projects, is it, and you were talking about, just briefly, is about getting started, is there a, what's gonna get started first, is, you got sewer line in Indian Hills, and Bell Road truck line, Highway seventy corridor, phase one, what's happening first?
Right now, and I don't have that before me, because I had Jeremy write something for the commission that we just had. I believe the Highway seventy-one is about ready to go for water and sewer. We're gonna look for reasons first, before we publish that. The, it, it, the, the Fort Main depends on what the engineers are doing right now. It was last year's project that we thought we were getting ready to get started, and at the last minute, it got sidelined for an ease of purpose, but...
Where's the Fort Main at, which one is it?
Uh, going from Alpha Packaging to, oh, I, I don't know what it's called in there, it's been about four names. It could be Eagle Drive, Fort Main, it could be Highway ten, seven main, or whatever it's on there.
Okay, thank you. When, so when do you think we'll see the Highway seventy-one corridor happen, in the summer, maybe?
Oh, it all depends on the engineering, and us getting even. You get it engineered, and then you turn around and try and get your easel. And if that works great, then you're ready to go. Uh, the actual Indian Hills and Bell Road, uh, the engineer talked about building them together. Uh, if you, if you're gonna put just a trunk line up, up Bell Road, uh, while you got them here, you might as well do the rehab on Indian Hills, we've got some pipe there, it's been giving us trouble ever since, uh, oh, nineteen ninety-nine, and Rick Bynum was on there, and he's had trouble, it's actually in, in back some houses. He said, while you got them here, you might as well did those together, and you won't have to charge special money to have relocated down here, so we'll save some money on that. That's probably gonna be one of the last ones. Uh, the dredging of ponds, we've been working on this since last year. Dredging the pond is two hundred and fifty thousand and two hundred and thirty thousand for the, let me see what it's called, Eagle Drive Lit Station, that was last year's, and we branded the snags on both of them. Uh, finding where to, to disperse the, what we get out of the ponds, uh, it can be accepted at city, at the city, and then he's also checking with some other, uh, people that actually dredge, that buy properties that they can land the plot, which would save a lot of money. And then the Fort Main, of course, was, uh, we're working on getting an even. Other than that, it's ready to go. Other than that, the sewer model, we did a sewer model, phase one last year, we still had, got the material, all the stuff far, but we're on phase two this year, we're getting ready to start, and, and stuff out in different areas, just to see where we're leaking the most, you know? Because if we keep building in places that are over, overused, and you start overflowing, before long, you've got SSOs, and if you got enough SSOs, then you're Fort Smith. And then they will demand, here's what you fix, and here's how much it's gonna cost. We're gonna fine you this much, but we want you to put it into your system. And of course, Fort Smith's is a big amount, I don't know what ours would be with, but, so we're being real careful about having people tie on. As far as, uh, what the mayor said, yeah, I'm, I'm very particular, you know, I want new people to tie on, but, it really depends on that, what comes out of my plant, and it gets harder and harder to meet ADEQ's expectations, they just keep planting everything harder. So, you know, if we were talking about annexation or something, we'd be talking about maybe putting a smaller plant, something under a million gallons, I'm a million gallon plant, I'm a major facility. My rules are as much or more than Fort Smith's, and I don't have scientists on staff. So, it's, it's pretty rough, so if you made something a little bit smaller, of course, you say, well, I'd like an airport, where are you gonna land? You gonna land Cessnas or seven forty-sevens? Depends on how big, you know, who's gonna build, what, where, where's where we would put it, and where you would build it at, build the trunk lines to.
Don't they have one of those little deals like that, where that black stone off of Highway forty-five, little sewer?
Package plant, and you can do that, uh, you start with that, if you got bigger than that, you can add on good. But then before long, depends on how big you're gonna get, you gotta start over again.
I'm just wondering if the subdivision folks put in part of the cost of that, or something, you should be doing that.
You know, I think that's, I think there's money that's applied, uh, for the lack of the system, from the people that live there.
Yeah.
It's, it's not, it's not on the old city or on the Chinese, it's those people paying for it.
That's what we look at at Fort Smith, I've studied, I wanted to look and, couldn't go over the business.
I, that, like, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, just to practice events with some humps behind him, looks like. Okay, anybody else with any questions from these guys?
I just wanna, uh, thank condolences to, to Grant, his father, pastor, yes, I have, I don't wanna listen.
One, I kinda had it already, but you got something on mind?
I'll wait for next minute.
Uh, I do have, the, uh, Tom Bashan has fallen, and he is our chairman of our planning commission, and he has broken his hip. And so he's, I think, in hospital, way of surgery, already had something, maybe already...
Sorry, yeah, I heard you.
His partial.
I said in church, he was having it at that minute, you're saying?
They said he's gonna be there the rest of this week, and then go to rehab for a while, week or so. He'll probably come out with a walker for a period of time, this is not a cure, it's another problem that he had, that he was probably rebounded to a cane again.
Uh, I ask you to remember, continue to remember Lance's dad, Earl Terry, in prayer, battling cancer. And I'm sure there's many others, too, so I have a lot left. Obviously, Greg's a good reason to say. So, uh, anybody have anything, department heads, do you have anything that you wanna confess to, I mean, mention? I, I wanna say something about our newest, our new animal control officer, uh, amazing young man, I swear he's twelve years old, I don't know which heck is out here or not, but he is doing an amazing job. You saw his, his report, I think it's like eighteen dogs, four cats, a possum, and a armadillo or something. But, you gotta be careful.
I could say that many times, I've seen him.
As you see.
I see him all the time. I see him all the time.
He, uh, he's good at his job, he's very professional, I witnessed his professionalism on the square the other day, and he'll, he'll sucker you in, uh, because I ended up going down to nothing but, and support him as the mayor, his first adoption ever on the city square for pets, and I walked away with a, a great period, he's, he's, he's a horse, and I had a great day at home, so I'm just a sucker, anyway, his name's Jake, if you wanna visit, you probably, you probably hear the bar game right now, you probably heard it, but he's done a really good job, I think.
I'd ask you what that was.
That would be the petition, I warned the other neighbors, I didn't tell them, I'm hoping the bill that the church grounds it at, he's a big old horse.
You get used to that.
But, yeah.
Well, I thought that was a, again, very good for him being, both of them doing the job, to, uh, try to do an adoption.
Oh, yeah, and he initiated that, yep. Uh, there were several people down there around him, I said Tammy was there, saying, oh, you need this dog, and she didn't take that from her, but, uh, I don't have any adopted, three or four maybe that day, he did get, I would say this, just to show his professionalism, there was a lady that stopped, very concerned citizen, although interesting, I witnessed it, and I talked to her myself, told her my name's Lance Terry, you'll have to... And I said that she was concerned that we had animals in, in two small cages, duh, they're on the square for adoption, and they're gonna be there about two hours, and she was right, it was a dog in a smaller cage, well, I had just removed the horse I was taking home, so we freed up another one, and she just continued to tell us how much of, she raises, what, Frenchies?
Frenchies.
That's not a dog, but anyway, that's what I said to Lance Terry, and she, she was pretty intimidating, and this young man handled it very professionally, not until she walked away, got her car, and he go, what, what was wrong with that one? But, uh, I understood her concern and...
Well, sure, if you represent people, well...
I did, I did, I pretended I had a dip in my mouth, just, just, picking on him, man. Thank you all for being patient, thank you, gentlemen, for coming and sticking through, I, I normally joke by people having stayed, you just did long there, so I don't know what that says about you.
Wait, we're on the ice cream.
You're right. I just got a text, and it should be here any moment, I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Say.